Welcome to another episode of Pod for Good, a podcast where we speak with the change agents trying to make Tulsa a more vibrant and inclusive place. I'm your chief philanthropod, Jesse Ulrich.
And I'm your vice admiral philanthropod, Chris Miller.
And today, very special episode where we have our first returning guest, our first friend of the pod, city councillor for District Four, Cara Joy McKee.
We talked to councillor KJ about the Black Lives Matter mural, what it's like to try to run a campaign while also trying to solve all the world's problems, and why nachos are just the best.
Enjoy. Hello, listeners of Pod for Good. A few days after we recorded our episode with KJ, many of her constituents received a very nasty flyer from one of her opponents, where one side of it was about the candidate and the other side was a clear attack ad against our city councillor. We wanted to give her the chance to respond to that for this episode, so she was kind enough to come back on with me for a couple of minutes. You'll get to hear her answer to that flyer and then our regularly scheduled episode. So, KJ, recently, some people in your district received flyers for one of your opponents, which I'm gonna have to name for this question to be asked, but Casey Robinson sent out flyers in support of him that on one side mentioned him and the things he wants, blah, blah, blah. And on the back, it's sort of an attack ad for you, where it's a very nice picture of you, by the way. And then Congresswoman Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, whose nickname for the people listening would be AOC, making a weird face right next to you, and with text talking about tying you, a city councillor, to a federal congresswoman, in sort of a, "Don't let socialists-- they let socialists in there, don't let socialists in here." How would you respond to "Vote no to socialism, vote no to Cara Joy McKee"?
It's really, it's not only ridiculous, it's really frustrating because people are scared enough this year. This is a fear-mongering ad that, it doesn't belong in local politics. We have nonpartisan elections at the local level for a reason, and there isn't a single vote in the whole time I've been on council that has come down along partisan lines. That's just not how we do things at the Tulsa City Council level. I think my favorite quote in that piece is that it suggests that I have tried to leverage COVID-19 to defund the police. Oh, my gosh. I've been working so hard to try to protect us from COVID-19 for our health and for the economy, to save our city budget for all of us and for the police. And, you know, Jesse, no one, no one at the city council, not a single one of us, has said we should defund the police. None of us have voted to defund the police because that doesn't fit with Tulsa. It doesn't fit with what we need. Oklahoma has a tradition of underfunding city governments. And what we need for the police, we need a well-funded, well-trained, well-focused, professional police department that can focus on stopping crimes and keeping us safe. When I talk one-on-one with our police chief, which I do on a regular basis, we've agreed that we are asking too much from our police department. We're asking them to be mental health experts. We're asking them to deal with homelessness. We're asking them to deal with poverty. And it's not their lane. It's not where they should be focused. But we don't defund the police to get there, and none of the city council thinks that we do. Instead, we find funding to support building up our mental health facilities. We stopped decriminalizing poverty. We work together with Chief Franklin, with philanthropy, with Mental Health Association, and the anti-poverty organizations that we have to fix all of those problems and to take that weight off of our police. And it's really unfortunate that my opponent wasn't paying enough attention to notice that that's what the city council is doing. It's a discredit to him, and nobody should be elected to city council that doesn't even know what's happening in city council, or who wants to get out there and lie about their opponents. It's really unfortunate.
We are very excited to have Pod for Good's first returning guest, city councillor for the 4th District of Tulsa, Cara Joy McKee. How are you doing, Cara?
Great.
Yes. I think, I think we need to celebrate this. There we go. All right.
I feel like I should do the wave or something.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
The wave won't work because Chris can't see me.
That's fine. I can start it, and then you two could go. I just won't know when it's my turn to round again.
Right.
And we will definitely do our best to not get you in trouble with the mayor like a certain other city councillor did on a recent podcast.
Let me tell you, the look in the mayor's eyes when he and I had a chance to six-foot distance, wearing our masks, have a face-to-face conversation yesterday, and I mentioned-- He said to me, "When I first saw it, I thought it was a mistake and they must have misheard him." And then I listened to the audio, and then he just leans back and gives me this wide-eyed look. And I thought the same thing. I thought, no way he said this. He did.
Yeah, yeah. On the plus side, I don't think there's anything that you could say on this podcast that would probably be worse than that. So, that's something.
Challenge accepted.
Yeah. I went from never having to think about that city councillor to thinking about him a lot for one week. That brings me to one of my, to one of our first questions, which is, I would like to take you back to the city council meeting about the mask ordinance, which you had to sit through the entirety of. I left after, I think, like, an hour and a half, maybe. It went on for a long time.
It did.
First, I want to commend you on your ability to keep a straight face, especially when someone is reading the text of an incredibly angry voicemail that someone left, which is the weirdest way to deliver that sort of thing.
Yes, yes, it is.
And I especially would like to give credit to the person reading that, because they also had to keep a straight face and try not to show their own frustration with what was being said.
Yeah. They are rock spirits. Yeah.
Yeah. We've been asking a lot of our guests, and I'll actually get to our technical first question here in a second, but are you less optimistic or more optimistic about us finally getting through this after that city council meeting?
I am more optimistic, more because it did what I thought it would do. I was asking for a mask mandate a long time ago, and people kept saying, "No, it's unenforceable. It won't work. People will blow it off." Sure enough, it did what I thought it would do. Most people actually want to obey the law. Most people are wearing masks. And now we're getting the data in that shows all over Oklahoma, communities that have mask mandates, the numbers are going down. Ta-da. Yeah, I'm more optimistic. I think that our suburbs will hopefully follow suit. Maybe they'll look at the data. Lots of crossing my fingers over here. They're scared. I really think they're scared, Jesse. I think that they are more afraid to admit that something is so wrong that we actually literally have to wear masks, so it's easier for them to just assume we're all crazy conspiracy theorists who want to muzzle them. That feels safer than admitting that there is a pandemic.
We've had pandemics before. They haven't infected a lot of Americans over those times. So, I didn't realize that people were so unclear that this could happen pretty easily.
Yeah. Shows our bubble. We're in that bubble, Jess. We are in the same bubble.
Yeah, listen, we are in a, apparently, a limo-driven liberal bubble, as one Redditor once told me. That person may or may not be running for mayor. Anyway.
What did they tell you? They called you a limousine liberal, right?
Yeah. Yes, when I posted about your first episode on Reddit many months ago. So, how are you doing?
I'm really glad. I'm really glad I had a baby last year. I think this is so funny. She's just, she's, you know, like, people are calling me names. Rural Oklahoma is just laser-focused at me right now. It happened with the rally. The rally came. I said, "This isn't safe." I think there are some groups that love the president on Facebook or something that shared my posts. And now, just every once in a while, they'll share something from me, and they just come at me. And it's awful, and I'm exhausted. My jaw hurts. I've, you know, had to go stay with friends a few times when people were too threatening online. But every day, I look over at my daughter, and she's just-- I lose it. She's happy, and it keeps it light, and I need that, because things are spooky, no doubt. 13 days till the election, though. Hey.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is an interesting time to have to campaign for anything with the pandemic, everything going on with Black Lives Matter, and just the world in general right now. It seems, I guess, one question is, how are you able to devote any time to campaigning with everything going on related to actually doing the work of a councillor?
Mm-hmm. I decided to not take any days off for a while, which isn't the healthiest of options, but I stick to my power naps. There's just too much to do. And last weekend, it was Black Lives Matter. It was the mural. It was the masks. It was COVID-19. Then the police shot a couple people. Then the anti-maskers were threatened to come down in Greenwood to protect the blue line that was painted through the mural. It was, and I'm just receiving these messages all day long, and trying to filter the things that I can't do anything about, and block out time to do the things that I can do something about. I can answer the messages that someone has sent me right now. I can respond to the questions from my council aide, or have a conversation with one of my colleagues. And I really try to focus my time in chunks, turn off the social media occasionally, but I'm very on right now. September can't get here fast enough. But, yeah, but it will. It'll get here. I don't have a, I wish I had a great answer, like, "I've got it all figured out," but no, it's seriously bananas at my house right now. It's a mess, and that's just gonna have to be the way it is for now. Yeah.
At least you have an excuse for why your house is a mess. I do not.
And I wonder, related to that is, obviously, there are these huge problems, these big systemic problems that you and the city government are trying to deal with. How do you also keep track of the small things, like, some of the stuff you've talked about before, grandmother who's, who needs help in their neighborhood because there's something wrong with their trash service or something like that? How do you still work on those everyday problems that don't go away when you have to spend so much effort on these big, massive problems that are sucking all the air out of the room?
Yeah, yeah. I have a two-word answer for that. It is Marissa Gomez. She's my council aide, and she is brilliant. This young lady jumped in. She joined the team in January. We had just a month together before the pandemic hit. And she's very intuitive and compassionate, and I can trust her to take a first stab at most problems that come at us, and to confidently flag, "Hey, councillor, I need you to weigh in on stuff." So, a lot of times, she's got something figured out, or she's processing and gathering the information to present to me in advance. It's absolutely essential. The District Four have that. Has someone that councillors may come and go, there needs to be a staff person who's just there, full-time. She actually shares District Four and District One, which is great, since Greenwood is in those two districts, and councillor Hall Harper and I have a lot of overlapping challenges. She makes a really big difference. And the same, the same goes for my campaign, except not Marissa Gomez. Council staff doesn't help with campaigns, but I have a lot of volunteers. I have a lot of help. And it's not a good time to be a lone wolf and try to make it all happen yourself. I depend on the people around me who care, and reaching out and saying, "Hey, y'all, I'm stressed about this. Does anyone have any ideas?"
Let me ask you this. I'm trying to find, and I found one, but it's a couple of years old, of the different city district maps. Is that part of Greenwood that has the mural on it, is that in your district or Vanessa Hall Harper's district, or is it on the board? Okay.
That's in District Four. Yes, it is. Uh-huh. And I did make it very clear to the councillor we were discussing earlier that the next time he wants to essentially drop an emotional bomb in my district, he should give me a heads-up first. That would be polite.
Yeah. Again, from that previously mentioned comments he made about the mayor on another podcast, not Pod for Good.
Pod for Bad.
Yeah. He is, yeah. He is not, doesn't seem to be that nice. Yeah. Good working relationship with all the city councillors.
Yeah. He's really always nice, face-to-face, checks in on me when people are threatening me online, bought a little hat for my daughter, can be really sweet and kind on a one-on-one thing. And then, I don't know, he gets out there and he pulls these political stunts that are, yeah, that do seem very mean-spirited. And it's confusing. I'm a very optimistic person who, I believe that there's good in everyone. I'm certain that there is. But I've had to come to grips with the reality that some people have some very different faces that they show at different times. And I've seen, I've seen quite a bit of evidence of that this year, that's some even, like, fake Facebook accounts, where it's this person is over here commenting as themselves, but I know that this alter ego is also them, and they'll be debating on the same post. And this is their good guy face, and this is their bad guy face. And that's fascinating, to be able to switch back and forth. Like, I can't switch like that.
Yeah. I did, yeah, that's insane. Who has that kind of talent? But I certainly don't. But talking about the mural, where are we currently with that? It's still there?
Yep.
It's still there. I know that you were in, you were in sort of negotiations with a lot of different parties to either save it or to accept a location. Is there, are there any updates you could tell us about at this particular moment?
From what I see, there's still a lot of online conspiracy theories circulating to say that Black Lives Matter is some sort of Marxist organization. A lot of people who don't even understand the concept of a decentralized movement, where we're all rallying around this idea, and it doesn't mean that somebody who says it over here represents everybody who says it. So, there's a lot of opposition. I don't know what's gonna happen with that. I can say that our official discussion of it and the plan being presented by council staff and by the legal department will come at 2:30 in the afternoon at the Public Works meeting. We moved it from the 10:30 so that we have plenty of time in the afternoon to have a full discussion. It's important that we don't open a Pandora's Box that allows people to put anything on the streets. I think we can absolutely do that within the destination districts framework. I have quite a few constituents who don't understand why we are retroactively considering the need to allow for something that was done without a permit. And there are, as you two know, there are so many reasons. But some of the big things I don't think people realize is, this was put on the street at a time when the President of the United States, who's consistently antagonized people of color, was suddenly coming to our city. No time for a permit was available, and it was during Juneteenth. And in a feeling, at a time when we're on the cusp of the Centennial of the Race Massacre, in this sacred space where the blood was spilled, this is a unique circumstance. It's not just somebody painted a political slogan on a street. It's an outcry of pain saying, "Hey, I actually do matter. I can't be a part of erasing that erasure, that saying that black lives don't matter, that has consistently happened throughout history and is still happening today, is what I and so many of my colleagues on council just aren't willing to be a part of."
Yeah. It amazes me that, and I didn't even, I didn't even take any philosophy classes in college, but I remember very early on in, like, my own study of history, like, the idea that laws are not necessarily moral, and a moral act can technically be illegal. And people seem to have a problem with this. They're like, "It's illegal. It can't be there." I'm like, "We are human beings. We are the ones who make these laws. They are not invaluable." And it's, the last four years has really brought out the fact that there's a lot of things I thought generally humanity agreed on that I was wrong about. For example, I thought we'd all agreed.
I thought we'd all agreed.
Yeah. Movies have shown me Nazis are bad. So, you know, even if I wasn't raised Jewish and had a job as a Holocaust educator, I would have known Nazis are bad.
Nazis are bad.
I don't know, Jesse. I think you're a little biased.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I need to check my biases at the door. Run down the ladder.
Checks biases. Nope, Nazis are still bad.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
But it does seem like, it's been interesting, because obviously, other cities have had to grapple with something similar related to Black Lives Matter murals. And they're facing some of the same legal, potential legal issues. And it's been interesting to see that some cities look at it from a common sense standpoint and say, "Yes, this may not be completely legal," or "It may open the door for other things, but for right now, from a common sense standpoint, because of the moment, we're gonna leave that, the mural there, and we're not going to add a bunch of other murals." Whereas, other cities are looking at removing, or I think it's Tampa added the Back the Blue mural, which regardless of what you think about it aesthetically, it was atrocious, but from an, I'm saying just purely from an artistic standpoint. But it's interesting, but--
It's hard to read. Like, it doesn't even do the one thing a mural should do. If your mural's just gonna be words, which is make it readable.
Yeah.
But we will send you a picture of it.
Yeah, we'll send you a picture. But no, it's just, it's just interesting to see, because it is an issue that cannot be solely looked through from the eyes of what's moral, what's legal, or even what's common sense, you almost have to say, "Let's all get together and decide what's best for right now." And it may not be setting a precedent. It may not matter in the future, but what are we gonna do right now?
Yeah, yeah. And there were quite a few options considered, suggested about, "We leave this through the Centennial of the Race Massacre and then see what happens next." And that may enter into the conversation next week. I think that we have established a Greenwood Main Street program as part of these Main Street programs that we, as the city, I think for 15 years have been funding and supporting these, and that Greenwood has become one of these programs. And that board wants to keep this in this place and maintain it, gives us a really nicely bounded way of saying, "Okay, they're sponsoring this." Now, that, some other organization for a good purpose that is supported by the city wants to come in and do a mural, such as Back the Blue or something like that, that's something we can consider. I'm not opposed to that. We'll just have to see what happens. I know that legal, city legal is looking into it right now, actually, as we speak. They're figuring out all the ins and outs of the proposal we have put forward.
Can you explain the, so there was a disconnect when the idea of removing it came up very quickly, of businesses in that area either asking for it to be removed or were asking for it to stay. There was confusion about who said what to who, or whom. Can you help us in that? Because I'm still confused about if there were any businesses that actually asked for it, or if that was used as an excuse to try to get rid of it.
I, I feel confident that the mayor reached out to the Greenwood Chamber of Commerce and had a conversation with their leadership, and was given the impression that they did not want it. I feel confident about that. I also feel confident that the Greenwood Chamber of Commerce is now saying that they didn't mean to say that, and they want to keep it, maybe.
So, they are also confused. All right.
They're also confused. And I think both Freeman Culver, Dr. Freeman Culver of the Greenwood Chamber of Commerce and Mayor G.T. Bynum could have handled the situation better.
We, I think we agree with that. Watching it live, I'm like, "This is not how I would handle it, sir."
And the other thing that brings up is that they may have the appropriate legal standing. I think there are a lot of people in that community that don't see that the Greenwood Chamber of Commerce as speaking for them, that they don't necessarily represent what the community wants that surrounds Greenwood.
Sounds like you have a good handle on it. Got a good handle on it. There's also the Black Wall Street Chamber of Commerce that felt the need to basically spin off from the Greenwood Chamber of Commerce due to a desire to have a more active, engaged, membership-style Chamber of Commerce. So, and both of those entities are completely separate from the Greenwood Main Street program that is now the entity that is applying to host the mural.
Local politics.
This is what happens when there are outside entities that destroy a community, like, the leadership and the, there's so much that has been done to Greenwood and the community there, and figuring out, we talked about this last time, how to give Greenwood back to black people and uplift and encourage and infuse wealth into that community so that they can, those communities, so that they can be more a part of the conversation and deciding what happens there, instead of, yeah, having things done to them and for them, which I know is absolutely exhausting. Yeah.
So, before we get to the hard-hitting questions where I ask you about your opponents, can you help, can you help me out with something? I have some questions about the propositions on the ballot at the end. One and two make sense to me. All right. One is deleting any reference to primary partisan elections. Okay. Second, the second proposition, which I think is the one you helped get on the ballot, which is the gender-specific pronouns, the gender neutral pronouns. Great. Should do that.
Easy.
Three through five is where I get confused, because there's a lot of, about the city attorney in two of them, and I'm like, "Why do I care?" So, explain to me, Proposition Three states, it's thusly, it's for the removal of members of authorities, boards, and commissions, where I'm guessing if we vote yes, the mayor and the city council can duly remove people from city commissions? Am I right in that?
Close. It's just a little, it's a little removed in that it means that the city council and the mayor, we, in collaboration, can, I think it may be an and/or situation, not certain about that part, but the powers that be can write an ordinance that would allow for the removal of individuals from the authorities and boards and commissions, because right now, the charter doesn't even let us write the ordinance that would let us remove someone. And the reason that we are asking to be able to write an ordinance, to be able to remove someone, is that the volunteers on these authorities, boards, and commissions are hard-working people who care a whole lot about the city, for the most part. But every once in a while, we get somebody on there. I don't know if they just want it to pad their resume or what, but they get appointed, and then they never show up, and that affects the quorum. And we can't actually hold the meetings if we don't have a quorum. And there's no way to take them off, no way to take them off, until they come back up for reappointment. And so, we can have an authority board or commission just hamstrung, because is officially on as the representation for District X, District 10, let's say District 10, and they are on vacation every time there's a meeting, and they act like they never got the email. It's, that's been happening, so we have to have an option. But getting to the point of debating the actual ordinance and what that would say, we're not even there yet. This would just give the ability to write an ordinance. And we'd wanna really write a carefully worded ordinance that would not allow for political appointments and firings willy-nilly. So, that would be a whole other debate that would need to happen within the city council.
Okay. That was my question. I was like, okay.
So, this gives the ability to create the ability to remove someone. It doesn't actually give the authority directly to remove someone.
That's exactly right. Yep.
All right. How long are, is each commission and authority have a different term of service? Like, are they all--
I think it's two or three years.
Yeah, that's a long time to hem during a city.
Yeah. It could be one-year terms, but I don't think so. I think it's a two- or three-year term.
Okay. Okay. All right, good. Like, I was worried about the sort of political nepotism, corruption that could be done if, say, one person, the mayor had the ability to remove anyone they wanted from commissions.
A certain, a certain friend of ours who is on a, let's say, a council that's for supporting humans, and if they were saying things that a mayor didn't like, and you wouldn't want them to have the ability to remove that person.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
All right. So, now Proposition Four and Five, which I'm gonna, I'll read you what it says, and then you can tell me what this means. Proposition Four is, "City attorney appointed by mayor to the classified service and confirmed by city council."
Right.
So, right now, how, right now, how is the city attorney appointed/hired?
Right now, city attorney is entirely appointed and hired by the mayor with no involvement whatsoever of the city council. And the reason that's problematic is because said city attorney also provides legal counsel to the city council. And it's really important that if you hire a lawyer, they know they work for you.
So, the next one, Proposition Five, talks about how, that it wants to list the duties of the city attorney in the Charter for Tulsa. From that phrasing, is it a correct assumption that the city, the city attorney's duties are not listed currently in the city charter?
I believe there's some vague explanation of the city attorney's duties, but what-- I believe there's some vague explanation of the, the city attorney's duties, but what, what proposition five is doing, this charter amendment is clarifying the fact that the city attorney does not have veto power. The city attorney, he or she represents the council, represents the mayor and gives us legal advice, but we're the lawmakers. And so we can decide something that agrees with the city attorney or doesn't agree with the city attorney because we make the laws.
Let's do a hypothetical. If a proposition five passed before the kerfuffle over the Black Lives Matter mural, what, would, how the city attorney responded, would it have changed what ended up happening? Like, is the city attorney's ruling on something now more finite?
Ah, yeah. I, I don't think it would necessarily substantively change what the city attorney does or how the council and the mayor interpret that now, but it might change how the public perceives and interprets what the city attorney says. There seems to be a misperception in the media and in the public that the city attorney is making law, that the city attorney is telling us what the law is and shall be. But the city attorney is giving us legal advice on the way that the city attorney interprets the legalities as they stand right now. And then it's our jobs as, as the lawmakers to decide, do we want to keep it that way? Do we agree with this legal interpretation? Do we need to change something? Do we need a second opinion? That sort of thing. The city attorney cannot veto anything the city council or the mayor does.
So it's like the, it's like the pirate code. It's like the pirate code in Pirates of the Caribbean. It is, they are just guidelines.
I can say, because I, I, I bike across it whenever I go to the YMCA and it does feel like traffic is slower there, actually feels safer biking through there. Like the cars are a lot slower and I don't know if they're, 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 whether they're looking at the mural or they're just feeling like they need to be a little more respectful when they drive across it. But either way, it feels safer going through there now.
Oh, that's fascinating. Yeah. The businesses, some of the business owners I've talked to about that from that section of street say that they've received more business from people coming in from out of town just to see the mural.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Mm hmm. It's becoming that destination district that we have in mind before we really do all the destination district investments that we've got planned. So, yeah.
Speaking of safety, one of the first, I think maybe one of the first things that I reached out to you about has now come to fruition. Now that Cherry Street, the construction is done, there are now, I know, exciting. And there are actual crosswalks with lights there. So you hit the button and I no longer feel like I'm going to get run over every time I cross the street on Cherry Street, which is really exciting.
Yeah, I have had several messages from constituents who went over there just to use the pedestrian crosswalk. I, I love that we have yellow nerds out there just like, I'm gonna push the button. And yeah.
I love that. And the one on 11th street as well, that's along the Midland Valley Trail. Not to get, make this podcast ultra specific to just me and the few other people that bike between Cherry Street and downtown. I'm very excited about the, both of those things.
So let's talk about why you helped Chris out, but my street's still in darkness at night.
I'm trying to, to really, you're in training, Jesse, to be able to just toughen you up a little bit. I didn't want to tell you, but since you asked.
Listen, I, I care deeply about the fact that I'm walking in darkness.
I care that I'm walking in darkness as well. I really do. That we had a moratorium on replacing street lines. How bananas is that? That shouldn't ever happen. I was just talking to folks in Owen Park, how, about how we shouldn't be running out of funding for traffic studies. And some of this is happening because we're underfunding city governments. People like to pay taxes for city governments. They, in, research has shown people like to pay taxes for city governments because they know exactly where it's going. This is going to police, it's going to lights, it's things like that. But that's not how we do it in Oklahoma. And you all have heard me say it before, we're still the only state that requires municipalities to only fund our general funds through sales tax. It, talk about being hamstrung. When people have to decide, do we pay the police or do we get a street light for Jesse? Yeah, you're in the dark.
On street light.
Yeah, that's, that's one of my serious pet peeves in the way that the highway system is a hot button for Jesse. The funding sources for the city government is mine. It's just, to me, it's been such a ridiculous thing to take away the ability. It just, it floors me that as a state, we have a large population that believe, that says they believe in local control over federal control, that believes in individuals and everything like that, but then takes away the ability of city governments to make decisions for themselves. So it's something that is hugely frustrating for me.
Yeah, I, last year during the floods, I ran into the governor three times and each time I talked to him about that specifically. I'm like, I know we're talking about floods, but hey, local control, those prevention bills, can I talk to you again about sales tax dependency and why that's regressive? He, I'm that lady to him.
Not only is it a regressive, but for a state that has massive spikes in like economy going well to economy crashing, you would think you'd want something more of a steady base there. So if people are not buying a lot of things, that the city governments don't run out of money, but.
Yeah. Public safety just idea at the state level, public safety districts is something we have put forward. Our state legislators have put forward five different times. And it really, without COVID-19, I, this probably would have been the spring it passed because the governor was ready to sign the bill, but the senate wouldn't even bring it up. And we couldn't go down there and advocate. And, and my colleagues and I, and the city councillors do not usually go talk to their state legislators, but they were ready to get in a van and go to Oklahoma City with me before pandemic trapped us all in our own homes. So maybe next year.
And I think what the last few years have shown us is if you, if we want meaningful change in this state, it has to be through a state question. So I don't know, maybe there's a way to do it through a state question.
Yeah.
Yeah. That may be the way, although it, it does end up with, we then have to go back and clean it up because when you get the public writing the laws, you end up not having that rigorous debate that, that works out all the little details, although sometimes it gives us maybe more what people would want. Yeah. There's pros and cons to it. I'd love to have, I'd love to have state legislators who listen to their constituents. Like, I really would.
I think this is a problem that, that we've seen a long time in Oklahoma. When you have such a huge percentage of the legislature effectively getting a buy into the, their, their next term because nobody runs against them, there's no reason for them to listen to what their constituents want. Frankly, if nobody's going to run against them and the, and their constituents don't care to vote for someone else, why should they?
Yeah.
It's cynical to me, but.
It runs, again, we've got that straight party ticket system. And so people don't even, they don't know who they've elected. They don't know what that person is doing on their behalf. Yeah.
Here's my serious question. And when I came up with this question, I was very happy with myself. So let's see how this goes. So your three opponents for district four, so there's three of them. If you were them, what would you say is their reason for running against you? What have you done that made them decide, I'm going to run for city council?
I think about this a lot. I was thinking about it when I watched the answers one of them gave at, at the forum last night that I did not attend because it was a mask, masks optional situation. And I'm not okay with putting myself and others in danger that way. So I, I did not go, but I wonder if, there were many elected officials who went to the I can't breathe protest on Brookside after George Floyd was murdered by the police. And I was the only one of those elected officials that I saw, that I can think of, that I saw who posted a selfie from Brookside. And I was, I was wearing my mask. I was social distanced from everyone. But two of my opponents live fairly close to that area and felt, and have, and one has, has specifically said that he felt afraid for his family. And then he gets on social media and he sees me posting that I'm down there. And in certain bubbles, the Black Lives Matter movement means crazy riots in the street, lots of property destruction. It doesn't actually ever make it into the public consciousness that that didn't happen here, that isn't happening here, that the few times there was a little bit of property damage, it was usually high school students from Broken Arrow or a handful of kids that stuck around. The police dealt with it really fast. There, I have friends who own businesses on Brookside who were nervous all night long. But, but they didn't experience what has happened in other places because this is Tulsa. This is Oklahoma. It's a different situation. And we're getting a lot of people really extrapolating to this larger national situation. They watch the news and they say, that's happening here. People are doing this to me. They're doing this to my community and they're not actually even seeing what's happening here. And they didn't even listen to what I said. My point is that I'm not sure I would have had three opponents if I had not publicly made that statement the weekend before filing. Sorry, y'all.
So like, they, they were fine with you as their city councillor until you, to them, made the mistake of supporting life.
So as far as I know, they were, but here's another interesting thing. I have, had never met nor spoken with any of them before, really the last couple of weeks prior to, to our recording right now. And I think that's a really important thing for people to keep in mind is that if you want to run for office, one, it's a good idea to have some experience with what's already going on and really know, be a voter for a while, volunteer on a campaign, know something more about what's going on. And I'm not saying that they don't all have that, but that's just generally good advice. And then I always recommend that people reach out to their elected officials and meet them and find out who they are and what they've been doing and what they stand for. I think at least one of my opponents has realized, actually, I feel really good about you representing me. Whoops. I, I, I don't hold it against people for running against me. And I, if I am fortunate enough to gain office once again, I will be happy to collaborate with, with my opponents and their supporters. That's what we do. We get over it, we move on, we try to keep making Tulsa even better.
I, I don't know if you want to get into this, but I thought this was funny to me. And just because of the sometimes rivalry between the fire departments and police departments, but I thought it was funny that the, the FOP endorsed some, a couple of your opponents and the fire department endorsed you. That was just funny to me. I don't know why, but.
Yeah.
I enjoyed that.
Yeah, it's, I, I enjoyed it as well. I will say that it is my impression that the fire department and the fire department's union collaborate a lot better than the police department and the policemen's union. And so it didn't, it did not surprise me that I got that endorsement from the, the fire department. I worked well with them and I was, I'm just so honored, so happy. They, I, I remember them coming up to me after the election last time and slapping me on the back and saying, we didn't think you were going to pull it out. You're the underdog. And they didn't endorse me last time. They were excited to endorse me this time and that feels great.
So other than voting on August 25th, what else would you like our listeners to know or do between now and then?
Oh, between now and August 25th?
Yes.
Encourage everyone to get informed and vote. People miss these small elections, these smaller elections. If the president's not on the ballot, if the governor's not on the ballots, it's really easy to not realize it's happening. And if you're listening to this and you plan to vote, assume that there is someone in your circle that does not know that the election is happening. I, right now, I'm using my social media platforms to remind everyone, hey, here's where you can go get the details about these, these things that are on your ballot. Here's how you request an absentee ballot, when you can go to early voting, how, how you can do all of this, all of these details that, that people are missing. Yeah, I, I, I think we need all hands on deck to help spread that information right now. It's also, it's pandemic time, so people, things are a little more clogged and people need to know. Go to the polls, wear your masks. We got elderly poll workers, that sort of thing.
Considering there's been a lot of attention recently on the post office and balloting and getting your ballot in time, when would you suggest people mail in their ballots?
Yesterday.
Guarantee that they will be counted.
Right away. Yeah. In fact, so many of my constituents that are talking to me have already mailed them in, but yeah, get them in right away. I, I recommend to put two stamps on them or take them to the post office and get the exact postage. I had a constituent text me this morning to say, I turned, I, I took my ballots to the post office. Mine, the postage was 55 cents and my husband, his postage was 70 cents. Why did that happen? And I'm like, maybe he used really heavy ink? I have no idea. No idea what happened there. Yeah, but get them in soon. Yeah.
I will continue the tradition we started with the last election, which was using the John Oliver post office stamps for, only for ballots.
There we go.
Chris, do you have anything else?
I think now is maybe, I don't know, I don't know what your answer would be today, but if you have to think back to a few weeks ago, but I guess that's really your question, Jesse. So I'll leave that to you. Is there anything maybe even outside of the upcoming election that you'd like to plug? Some interesting things that are coming up, either with the city or things that you're involved in that you want people to know about that we haven't talked about?
With remote meetings, making comments on the city council agenda has never been easier. You can literally call and leave a voicemail about any of our five o'clock agenda items. And I love it when people actually leave a voicemail instead of sending in an email because it's really nice to hear your voice. If you care about something, say something at the city council meeting. Let's see, what else? Oh, there's so many things going on right now. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Remember your three W's. Wash your hands, wear your mask, watch your distance, stay six feet apart. While we are, while we're in a little bit better shape since we put forward the mask mandate, our numbers for COVID-19 are still nowhere near where they need to be. And we're moving towards winter and that means flu season and that means more people indoors and that could mean another spike. It's important that we deal with the pandemic now. We can still spend so much time together outside instead of indoors. It's a really big deal that, that with election season now, and with the Black Lives Matter movement and with so many other things that people care about, it can get, we can, we can get complacent and we really need to be vigilant. So, so many other countries have gone back to normal. They're able to go to school, they can hug their elders. And I'm furious that we don't get to have that. If we had stayed the course when we flattened the curve and just been a little bit more cautious before going back out there, we'd be sending our kids to school right now too. Don't get complacent. Yeah. Man, I really, this is such a bummer, y'all.
Yeah, listen, this is episode four of Pod for Sad where we can't have an uplifting conversation, but we will end on a happier note, which is when you're not taking care of your adorable little child and you're not at city council meetings, what are you doing to relax? What is your sort of pop culture comfort food?
Oh, pop culture comfort food. I have rediscovered nachos. It's been a long time since I had any nachos. The spouse brings home a big bag of tortilla chips and he made nachos for us the first time. It was his first time making nachos, obviously, because it was just like this sprinkling, tiny sprinkling of cheese. I'm like, no, you gotta put the cheese, you put the cheese on there. Yeah.
It's amazing how much cheese you actually need to make it look like restaurant nachos. It is a lot of cheese.
It's a lot of cheese. He didn't know, now he knows.
I like to do them in the oven and I like to put some non-stick foil down. So that way some, some of the cheese cooks without chips. So you get like a nacho that's made only of cheese.
Oh, good. So good. That's smart man right there. Yeah.
There's a, a huge fan of nachos who is walking behind Chris on his camera.
I thought, I thought that was a nacho fan right there.
Yes, yes. I will. Well, yes. Nora loves her nachos.
And I actually made some nachos earlier today, so that's funny. I did not put cheese on them.
Such lovely women and I was so excited to get to hang out with them and stuff this year that I haven't hung out with anyone. It's.
Chris and I are losing it. At least Chris, Chris sees more people than I do. I'm just here, my computer's been editing things.
I know. We're, I don't know when it's going to happen, maybe 2021, maybe 2022, but, but we're going to have just like such a big blowout, everybody can hang out again, party. It's, I don't even know. We're gonna, we're gonna have ice sculptures probably.
So Chris likes to go overboard on party planning and he's had to rein that in. So when he's able to release that again, it's going to be massive.
Oh. Oh, Chris, I had no idea. That's really good to know. So I'm, I'm going to add you to a Facebook group. My friend Holly created a group last night. It's called how to wean. And I thought, I'm like, is this about breastfeeding? Cause she's asking me about it. No, it's how do we Halloween? How do we do? How do we do Halloween during the pandemic? And we've got all sorts of, so this is something fun, totally not council-related, that we're talking about, do we have parades of adults in cars throwing candy to the children who are stationary in their yards? Or do we, do we, do we do it more like DoorDash? Where we like put some candy out and then run back to the, to, to our front door and wave at the children as they come by and grab the candy? Or like what we do? This is, my idea is that we do, we do, at, at least at some point during the Halloween season, a six-feet-of-spookeration party where everyone has to wear a costume that maintains six-foot distance, whether you're talking hoop skirts or tentacles or something like that.
Just all masked, with it, all mascarilla costume.
All wearing masks.
I'm already thinking, so what about like a potato gun that you put the candy in and just shoot it at the doors as you go by?
I'm gonna have to get creative to write this ordinance, but yeah.
Run about the city attorney and then not listen to him. City attorney, whoever you are, I apologize for mocking your inability to do anything. Hopefully soon though, everyone hopes, August 25th.
August 25th.
All right. Kara, thank you so much for joining us. This was great, as it always is. I hope you all enjoyed our conversation with city councillor KJ. We find her as energetic and fantastic as I hope you all do. Please don't forget to vote on August 25th. And while you're voting, hopefully you are mailing in that ballot. And most importantly, for me and Chris, please subscribe to this podcast anywhere podcasts can be found. And hopefully there'll be a time in the future when I don't have to say this, but listeners, Telsens, Oklahomans, get done out there and wear a mask.